June the 13th, Andover City Council meeting to order. We'll start off with a very short roll call.
Clark, C.R. Nelson, council member.
Ben Lawrence, mayor.
Chris Estes, council member.
Troy Taylor, council member.
Mike Keller, police chief.
Donna Davis, chief financial officer.
Chad Russell, fire chief.
Jennifer McCosland, assistant city administrator.
J.T. Klaus, city attorney.
Les Mangas, director of public works.
Susan Renner, city clerk.
Mark Datter, city administrator.
Item number three is the invocation. I see Pastor Jerry Smith and Chaplain Smith with Faith Baptist here. Thank you.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the beautiful day today, the rain, and now the sunshine. We pray for the city events coming up, concert in the park, Fourth of July activities. We pray for safety in all those events and just bring the community together in some of these events. We pray for our neighbors, we pray for our families, we pray for our businesses within our city limits. Lord, we pray for those traveling through. We pray for the city council tonight, the staff, and the first responders, those who serve faithfully in our city, help them with their decisions and help them in safety in their work that they have a safe summer. And we pray for our children during this summer months, too. And pray that we'd watch out for them in the streets and we'd all just work together in the community and just continue to build up our community in the family and neighborhoods that we live in, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
If you would stand with us for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty as its own.
Item number six, excuse me, item number five, is the public forum. Is there anyone here that wishes to address the council? There being none, I will move on to item number six, which is the acceptance of the agenda. Am I correct in not seeing anything else this evening?
Mr. Mayor, I would move to accept the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion by C.R., second by Chris, to accept the agenda as presented. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number seven, I believe we have a request from the Green Valley HOA Fifth and Sixth for a pool party on June 24th that corresponds with a street closure. This man, if you'll give us your name and address for the record.
Yep, Jessica Ryder, R-E-I-T-E-R. My address is 201 Oak Tree Court.
This is the same street closure you do every year?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve the street closure request for June 24, 2017, as presented.
Second.
Motion by C.R., second by Chris, to approve the street closure on 6/24 of this year as presented. Further discussion.
I just want to comment that I live in the Green Valley Fourth Edition, and we don't have a pool, so this is a real bummer every year, but I hope you guys have a great time.
That's what the Parks Department could do for you.
Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number eight, which is your consent agenda, items eight, one through eight, ten, eight point ten, I should say.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented to us.
Second.
Motion by Troy, second by Chris, to approve the consent agenda as presented. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Move on to item number nine, some budgetary benchmarks. Mr. Datter, floor is yours.
Mr. Mayor, as you know, we're well into the budget season, and this year, we're going to come with kind of our final budget plan at the next meeting. We didn't have individual presentations from the department head, except in front of senior staff, and I believe each department head met with their city council liaison to talk about their budget. But I know this is somewhat repetitive for everybody's on the council to talk about benchmarks and how we compare ourselves to other cities, but I think it's helpful for those who might be tuning in to understand how Andover compares to other cities in the area and how we try to judge what type of amenities and other items we can provide our citizens within the scope of the budget we have and the resources we have. So really quickly, what we're always compared to, obviously, is Wichita and Sedgwick County. I just want to point out again that Wichita has a $3.2 billion valuation in comparison to the city of Andover's approximately $140 million, and Sedgwick County's about $4.5 billion. They have a fire district that's $850 million that serves cities like Park City, Bel Air, Hayesville. So the, you know, the resources are considerably greater than ours. And I would also point out that I was reviewing my sales tax numbers, and actually, those are just their general fund numbers. You could about double that for Wichita, gets about $58 million a year, and Sedgwick County gets approximately $28 million a year. And you can see Wichita's mill levy at 31 is about 10 mils lower than Andover's, again, because they have a much wider tax base. And the 49 includes Sedgwick County and then another 18 mils for fire service. So if we go down to the next slide, we can take a look at the cities I think, and I think staff would agree, we are comparable to in terms of population, valuation, and other resources. I would like to say that we just received, after I put this PowerPoint together, our assessed valuation number, and we went up, the city went up about $7.5 million. Actually, we went up closer to $9 million, but you have to subtract off, of course, the street shop and the restroom and the new building at the YMCA, which was about a value of $5 million, million dollars in valuation, but they don't pay any property taxes. Which just as a side note, with our new tax lid, when the state figured out what the calculation should be before we go to a vote, I had talked to our state representative, Kristy Williams, and said, any of those exempt properties should be credited to us before we have to take that to our citizens, because we don't get to tax those, and they come on the tax rolls whether we want them to or not. We'll have another church coming on the tax rolls on Kellogg that's just been approved by the site planning committee. So those are a couple million dollars in increase, valuation increases that, quite frankly, we have to provide emergency service to, impacts our streets, so forth and so on. So I think that's a flaw in their calculation, and I think Andover probably has more of this type of stuff occur in our community than maybe other places do. We love the Y, we love any spiritual facility that comes to town, but the fact of the matter is we generate no property tax off of those, and it's just something we have to keep in mind as we continue to grow and with the realities of this tax lid. So anyway, I'll move on real quick. As you can see, our population is 12,745. We have just over, actually, we're closer, going to be closer to 143, 144 million in valuation, our mill levy is 41. We don't have a general sales tax, and typically, that's in the format of a countywide sales tax where there's a formula whereby your population and your overall tax levy determines what you get out of that sales tax. Butler County's never done that, and I think it probably is a, not a helpful thing to us overall throughout the county for a variety of reasons, one of which is that money can be allocated any way you want to. Our community has decided to go with a dedicated sales tax, obviously, to the street sales tax, to improvements like the city hall, the library, and the street shop, the restroom, and the ladder truck, but those are strictly dedicated to those things specifically, and we can't deviate from that in any of our expenditures. And then we get about $1.4 million in franchise fees, and we do a small transfer from our sewer fund to offset some expenses that we believe we have just administratively. I only have one Johnson County city up there to compare to. It's really not a fair comparison. They're just a lot richer area than the Wichita area. I mean, Andover is obviously very well off with our median income and our median household, but Marion, a city that's a little bit smaller than us, generates nearly $12 million in sales tax per year. I will say that when I checked, all the Johnson County sales tax rates, just about are all higher than Andover, rate 8.55, and they're all closer to 9% or over 9%. But just the massive amount of retail they have in Johnson County leads these smaller towns to be able to generate a great deal of sales tax, so therefore, you see their mill levies lower, plus they have good valuations on top of that. So when people look around at Johnson County Recreation and other facilities up there, they have to remember there are substantial resources behind all that, and, you know, it'd be a great thing to have, but just the reality around here is the resources aren't quite the same as we go out and see. The cities that I think we're really financially comparable are right there, McPherson, Derby, Winfield, Newton, Mulvane. For a variety of reasons, you could go back and forth. You notice Mulvane is a little bit lower in population, but they have considerable gaming revenues they're receiving now that I think puts them in a really good position for enhancements to their community. Winfield is a city that has an electric utility whereby they can transfer money into their general fund by what they generate in electric sales. We don't have the advantage of such things. Derby benefits from the Sedgwick County sales tax to the tune of about $4 million a year. That's their general sales tax. Then they've dedicated another two and a half million or so to improvements like a swimming pool, a library. I'm not sure what they're currently using it for, but they have utilized that very effectively. Newton has a countywide sales tax of about 2% that they get a considerable amount from about $2 million a year, plus they have a water fund and some franchise fees that they get some money from. The cities that I think are comparable, that I would say we're in a better financial situation, are Hayesville, Augusta, and El Dorado. You know, we have higher valuation, our sales tax generates more than theirs does, and the only thing I would say Augusta has that we don't is an electric utility that they can transfer money from. They have a pretty flexible general sales tax. But overall, I would say we have better resources. The other thing I want to point out about McPherson, Derby, Winfield, Newton, and Mulvane is they all have a school district-wide recreation commission, which generates considerably more money for their recreation than Andover has the ability to take advantage of. So this is just kind of a overall view when we compare ourselves to other communities of our size, and just to let you know the resources we have versus those communities. I'd be glad to stand for any questions, but I think this was probably more for anybody tuning in or anybody who's not quite familiar with the finances in Andover and the surrounding communities.
Well done.
Mr. Mayor, I had one question for Mark. Mark, tell me again, I thought that cities could not have any other sales tax besides the dedicated, so am I missing something on the general? Is that just utilities? Is that what you're saying? Why?
J.T., correct me, but generally, there's a countywide sales tax that is split amongst the cities within the county, and the balance goes to the county.
Right.
Then they put an additional sales tax on, some charter, even higher than that.
Okay, okay. Don't we still have that Butler County quarter percent sales tax?
It's still under.
Strictly to communications.
Okay. Okay, gotcha. Okay, never mind, I'm good now.
We have a point. We're limited up to 2%? Is that right?
Yeah, that's what I thought. Okay.
You telling me other communities charter out from that statute?
That's the only way to figure out that the Johnson County communities are bringing access of 9% is they must be chartered out somehow.
Well, and you're saying Augusta's getting the 2.2 million from where? Utilities. Oh, they do. Okay.
Their citizenry decided they would rather pay more sales tax than what they're offering.
Okay. Gotcha.
That makes total sense, because a lot of that money doesn't come from them, right? Comes from outside, people buying stuff there.
No, that's, well, I look at this, and I think, wow, you know, Andover is an amazing place, people move here continuously, and they love here, we have a lot of building projects going on, and our mill levy is lower, you know, we don't bring in as much, and we're fine. So I don't, I know that we have a lot to do, but we'll never have enough money to do everything we want to do in the city, but I think that we're hitting a mark with what our citizens want us to do. I don't, I mean, we're building an amphitheater, we're, we just bonded out new schools, and so I don't think that we should always be looking for additional sources of revenue from our citizens. That's what it sounds like when we compare, and we're talking, and we keep talking about how all these other places are bringing in additional funds in different ways. Yeah, that's great, but man, we're managing our city very well because of what you do and because of the way that the council and the mayor has directed us for years now. So I don't think we should always just be looking for additional sources of revenue. It's my opinion.
Yeah, I see your point. My larger point here was I think people feel overtaxed here, and I'm just trying to show that in relative comparison, I think we do a decent job of providing pretty good services, really good services, like you say, at a reasonable cost.
However, I don't want to give up on my annual motion that I always lose, and I've not done it the last few years, and that is that we should do away with property tax and have all sales tax, and everybody would be happily ever after. But that's a minority position.
Tonight, am I passed? Yes.
Anyway, job well done there. Mark?
It's good to know. You know, we track this stuff regularly and at least yearly, it probably happens two or three times a year, to kind of check some balances where Andover sits, compares to other communities. Yeah, you're right. I think we do a decent job compared to the mill levies in a lot of other communities, so. But we've also been blessed with tremendous growth and increases in valuation that have kept that mill levy down, too, so. All right, move on to item number 10.
Okay.
Somebody be so kind as to recess the city council meeting and call to order the Public Building Commission meeting.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Troy, second by C.R., to recess the Andover City Council meeting and convene the Public Building Commission. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Madam President.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll convene tonight's Public Building Commission meeting with a call to order and a roll call from my left.
Clark, C.R. Nelson, public commissioner.
Ben Lawrence, commissioner.
Chris Estes, chair. Okay, and we have in our packet, I hope you've all reviewed the minutes from our last meeting, our last two meetings, November 29th of last year and May 23rd of this year. Are there any issues about the minutes? We need to approve those.
Madam President, I would move to approve the minutes of May 23, 2017, and November 29, 2016, as presented.
Okay. We have a motion by C.R., thank you, and a second by Troy to approve two meetings of minutes, November 29th and May 23rd. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. We have what we've all been waiting for, thanks to the mayor and his leadership and the staff and everybody's hard work with the community. We have a review of the amphitheater bids that have been open June 2nd. So we can look at the bids. It looks like we have a low bid from key construction, but do we have any discussion on this issue first? Overview.
I would certainly let staff, other staff comment on this. I think we were really pleased with these bids, and we believe we have the ability to do every alternative within the bids. I would point out that we, right now, are not going to do alternative number seven, the stage trench, is that, am I correct on that?
Stage what?
Trench duct.
Trench duct.
Whatever that is.
It's a system of ductwork in the floor of the stage so that wires could be put in a trench and covered up rather than laying about the floor like they typically do. It's particularly important in theater.
So we said we don't want that?
It was a big number. If you, if you look at the bid tab.
Okay, 50 grand.
Key's number on that was well over twice most of the other bidders. And when we talked to them, they said, yeah, we really didn't have time to get a good feel for the value on it and put the only number in we could find. And apparently, from looking at the other bidders, there must be other subcontractors that are willing to do it for a lot less money.
So how do we go about that? Will we approve without seven, or are requests approved with the request of seven we needed? Are we the same? I mean, how?
We'd recommend to you that you accept the bid without number seven, and then if we decide during construction that we want to revisit it, they can put a number together for us in the form of a change order.
I have another question that, the motion says $1,595,430.
Yeah, I had included the cost of issuance in that, so I would back that off.
1,523.
Yep.
Okay. So the low bid is 1,523.
Minus 48.
But then minus the 48, exactly, or no?
That would include alternate seven.
Because the 1,523 does include alternate seven.
Would be 1,523 minus 48.
Okay, so that would be, get you, 1,475,500, is that correct?
1,475,500.
Right. The other thing I would like to ask on this, the PBC authorizing resolution gives us the authorization to do the project. Additionally, our budget authority gives us the ability to take the money from the other funds that we've designated to pay for some additional, the additional alternates. So if we could make the motion allowing staff or the city administrator to approve all vouchers, the money's already been approved in the budget and in the resolution. This is a relatively simple project. We're not going to be bringing in a lot of equipment like we do with the street shop and other things like that. Well, that'll need to be approved, so that's within my motion, however you want to phrase that, at $1,475,500.
So we shouldn't put our motion as not to exceed, because we are going to exceed that?
Well, if we do, we'll have to come back for a change order.
Okay.
I think if you want to approve key construction as your low bidder, the amount of, and authorize staff to review and pay all vouchers.
Okay.
Is that a motion?
Sure.
And that number is $1,475,500?
I believe that's what I intended.
I would second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Ben for $1,475,500, and a second by C.R., but also for staff to review and pay change orders.
And that's.
I think that was subject to our city attorney's review of the contract.
Subject to our city attorney's review.
Yes, we have to then prepare a contract with Key for the city attorney to review. So this is just, this is making the award. Right.
Okay. So let me recapitulate.
Okay.
I made a motion to approve $1,000,000.
$475,500.
$500, and award the bid to key construction in that amount, and authorize staff to review and pay all vouchers, and I'll leave it at that, because you'll bring the contract back.
Perfect.
And I will second that alternate motion.
Okay.
Or clarification?
We have a clarified motion by Ben and a clarified second by C.R. to approve the award, the bid to key construction and review and pay all vouchers in the initial amount, $1,475,500. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None, and the motion carries. We will have an amphitheater.
I got a motion to have a Public Building Commission meeting.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Troy and a second by C.R. to adjourn the Public Building Commission meeting and reconvene the Andover City Council meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And we are back in council. Mr. Mayor?
All right, well, let's reconvene here at the city council meeting and move on to item number 12. I know there's a wide array of subjects we need to cover here in executive session. You think 20 minutes is sufficient?
I think we always want to start with that and see if we can get out.
We could always come back out, Mayor.
Okay, so somebody needs to make a motion, go in executive session, the governing body, the city attorney, the city administrator, the assistant city administrator, the public works director, for approximately 20 minutes for consultation with the city attorney on matters that would be deemed privileged in an attorney-client relationship.
So move.
Second.
Motion by C.R., second by Chris, to go in executive session. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Don't forget to knock.
Jenny, thank you. Jenny, thank you.
So moved?
Second.
Motion by Chris, second by C R to come out of executive session. Further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I think we are down to member items? Am I missing something here?
No.
Yep. C R, you want to start us off?
Uh, no items.
Chris. I am very much looking forward to the Concert in the Park Saturday, and I just want to take this opportunity to say that I don't think Ben and his vision for this in the last five years has really gotten enough credit. And I really think that I want to appreciate the staff for all the hard work they've done and all the volunteers. Uh, it's really going to be a good time. And, um, hey, someone asked me, what is the policy on pets? No pets? What's the deal?
No pets.
No pets. Okay, that's what I thought.
Jennifer.
Um, and so, uh, thank you. So I hope everyone has a wonderful and safe time, and I'm crossing my fingers for the weather. It's gonna be great.
Troy.
No items.
I will say to your comment, Mrs. S D's, that there's been an amphitheater in our comprehensive development plan, which is part of the parks plan, for a long time, probably going on twenty years, almost twenty years. But the original plan calls for about a six hundred seat little outdoor thing, and, um, I just took that idea and ran with it. Um, it wasn't even my idea to begin with. It was, it was a vision of a lot of people that came before us, and me especially. And, uh, I think it is going to be special, and it has taken a lot longer than five years to put together. I've been working on this for twelve, at least twelve, and, uh, I'm glad to see it come to fruition. I think this will be a tremendous thing for Andover, a great asset that will get used constantly. Um, and that, uh, people will be so glad that it's there.
Mm-hmm.
We've tried and said forever, we're trying to make this area, this park, the epicenter of Andover, and I have no doubt it will be eventually. So, thanks for your kind comments. Staff, have anything else?
Yes.
First of all, we need to get used to using our microphones. I have a couple of texts that, um, people aren't using their microphones, turning them on and off. Um, there's an invitation up there that Troy has that maybe now you have.
I passed it down.
Um, if any of you'd like to attend that, let me know, and I'd be glad to do the R S V P, um, for you. It's on June the twenty ninth.
Okay, let's get out of here.
Mr. Mayor, I move we adjourn tonight's council meeting.
Second.
Motion by Chris, second by Troy. Further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I think we are down to member items? Am I missing something here?
Nope.
Yep. C R, you want to start us off?
Uh, no items.
Chris.
I am very much looking forward to the Concert in the Park Saturday, and I just want to take this opportunity to say that I don't think Ben and his vision for this in the last five years has really gotten enough credit. And I really think that I want to appreciate the staff for all the hard work they've done and all the volunteers. Uh, it's really going to be a good time, and, um, hey, someone asked me, what is the policy on pets? No pets? Hmm. What's the deal?
No pets.
No pets. Okay, that's what I thought.
Jennifer.
Um, and so, uh, thank you. So I hope everyone has a wonderful and safe time, and I'm crossing my fingers for the weather. It's gonna be great.
Troy.
No items.
I will say to your comment, Mrs. S D's, that there's been an amphitheater in our comprehensive development plan, which is part of the parks plan, for a long time, probably going on twenty years, almost twenty years. But the original plan calls for about a six hundred seat little outdoor thing, and, um, I just took that idea and ran with it. Um, it wasn't even my idea to begin with. It was, it was a vision of, uh, a lot of people that came before us, and me especially. And, uh, I think it is going to be special, and it has taken a lot longer than five years to put together. I've been working on this for twelve, at least twelve, and, uh, I'm glad to see it come to fruition. I think this will be a tremendous thing for Andover, a great asset that will get used constantly. Um, and that, uh, people will be so glad that it's there.
Mm-hmm.
We've tried and said forever, we're trying to make this area, this park, the epicenter of Andover, and I have no doubt it will be eventually. So, thanks for your kind comments. Staff, have anything else?
Yes.
First of all, we need to get used to using our microphones. I have a couple of texts that, um, people aren't using their microphones, turning them on and off. Um, there's an invitation up there that Troy has that maybe now you have.
I passed it down.
Um, if any of you'd like to attend that, let me know, and I'd be glad to do the R S V P, um, for you. It's on June the twenty ninth.
Okay, let's get out of here. Mr. Mayor, I move we adjourn tonight's council meeting.
Second.
Motion by Chris, second by Troy. Further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.
Ta-da. I'm impressed that people texted.